Hey. Welcome, everyone. Call this meeting to order Wednesday, October twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three, seven o'clock. To the select board. All right. We can review our agenda. We have a few. Step up. Draft of a. Bid. RFP, I guess, for the. West Side from Eric and.
That's a problem. A agenda on the authority and black road during maintenance. On the agenda. That's for that.
Yes, question. Perfect. And then we have. In addition, we have a feedback form, not from Rick, but from Sherry. Are there any other? Edits, corrections?
And there's an email there. On that side of.
You're right.
Something.
From David.
He's on here, so I'm expecting more problems to speak to it.
Okay, we can put that in under. New business. Okay.
I can tell you that there's. A mutual report tonight, so.
Um. You think you could just send what where you're at, so we can. Think about it for our next meeting. It's what you have so far, doesn't have to be done, done, but. When we have. The draft you sent us before.
Right.
Probably not much has changed.
Not much changed, just it's tallying up the revenues for the highways, you know, if there's a balance.
Yeah.
That kind of thing.
Yeah.
I was out listing all day today, so.
Yeah.
Sorry. Well, the weather is nice. Well, my cheeks are rosy because I was in sunshine today and I'm on Doxycycline because I've got a kick fight in. I forgot it wasn't supposed to be a song. Somebody said, hey, your face is getting red. So that's what that is.
Right. I mean, not nice, but yeah, it looks sunny at this time of year.
Oh, good day with the outside.
Rain showering was weird.
Yeah.
It poured for a while.
Today?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thankfully, we missed that.
Two minutes in the morning. All right. Um, let's review the minutes from our last meeting from September twenty eighth. Anybody have any? Notes? Edit notes, comments?
I think it looks good.
Yeah, I thought it looked good when I read through it. Would you like to make a motion to approve it? I make a motion, we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Second it.
All those in favor? Bye. Bye.
All right.
We have citizens input. Anybody like to speak?
Can I have just one question? Um, I'm looking for as a citizen as for permission to ride over the town property with snowmobiles this winter.
Right.
You mean the?
The trail?
You you mean for best go over the. Town road parts of?
Correct.
Okay.
This is something that we do normally. Do we have any?
No.
Problems? All right. We do we normally vote or just by consensus do we give permission?
You can do it either way. For that.
By consensus, we can agree.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Anybody else for citizens input? No? Okay. Highway. Eric, you're up.
Okay, uh, road crews been grading, filling potholes, leaf bowling. We've been hauling winter sand. We got the Culver installed over, uh, by Josh Allen's on the Northeast Road. We got a giant rock out of the road over there also. Um. And that's about all I get for what we've been up to.
Yeah, that giant rock, is that what you had, um, Allard help you get out? That was on the. It's on invoice for that.
Yep. It was bigger than anybody thought.
Um, and when we pay Allard, oh, my gosh, that is a huge rock.
We grow in baking.
We do.
Oh, did you send one?
You should.
Or did you take a picture of it?
Really, we should have that.
Picture of it.
Yeah, I've driven by it. I didn't see what's in the road, but yeah.
Um. I'm just curious what line item we're paying. For that work.
Project contingency.
Project contingency.
Okay, that's. What we sort of set aside for.
Things like that. Okay.
But in this case, it was. An unanticipated expenditure, and that's where it comes out of this.
Okay.
Contingency is a little bit of stuff in there.
Okay, that's great. I was, that was a bigger number than I. I just wanted to make sure we had a where it was coming from. And so we just won't be doing as much crack ceiling. That's how we'll work with that line item. We'll just pull from it.
It depends if we can find money someplace else and do the crack ceiling.
Yep.
Might ask Eric about that. I think we have to get. In line to rent a crack ceiling stuff.
Right, right.
You could have. Have them tell you about that.
Okay. Does that? Does that, my question makes sense, Eric? Just wondering how we're.
Yep, it does make sense. I tried to get in line to rent that machine and they said we were. Uh. Into cold weather by the time it was available, so we'll have to wait till spring for that one.
Yeah.
Can you? Can we be first?
Right, can you reserve it for springtime?
Yeah, I think so. About to wait and see when springtime is.
Right, but if we wait until springtime to reserve it, then we might not get it before. The end of June. I guess it depends when you want to do it.
Yeah, I'll try to set something up for June.
Okay. Um. You guys have any questions for Eric about his report? Uh, McCoy and Gulf Road Winter Maintenance. We got the letter from Frank.
Yeah, probably needs to be just noted in the minutes that.
Yeah. Due to health issues, he will not be able to do the work he had been doing on. The west side of town. Um. Thank you, Frank. Um, so now we need to. Address this. We have a, you did a. Like this, um. A draft for an RFP for the west side, Eric. Um, is this?
Um. When you get to the end, I set it up both ways. Um, for an hourly rate and, uh. For a yearly rate, if you guys, I talked to Stan Martel over there and he kind of sounded like he might be interested in doing a yearly. Rate, which is a little bit of a roll of the dice. For the town. But, um, it'll be. Easy for, uh. Budget work, so. I figured this was a good place to start anyways.
Then we can tweak this.
Mm-hmm.
If we need to, obviously.
Right, so we kind of need to.
What we've done in the past is we paid. Phil pays and then. Well, we always paid Phil and he paid.
He contracted.
It was. So much of the time for plowing on the Gulf Road and. McCoy Road and then sanding the face of the.
But we provided the sand and salt. To them.
We didn't provide any salt that I know of because they're just under.
Right. But the, okay, so what we provided is sand. And this is with. The contractor providing. Their own material, yes?
That's what it says, yep.
Yeah.
So how does this work? Will they be? Policing the road each day to see what needs, or will our guys still?
No, they will do it.
Okay. So if that's the case, do we want to include anything about? I know. Tree removals in there, but any other debris that might be in the road, just, you know, keeping it safe passage?
We should word it tree.
Anything other than that, then Eric would be going over them. So Eric, is there any chance that once you get down? You're. Salting the roads that you'd have time to run over there in a little truck and plow the sand?
It depends on the storm, um, but I don't think they you'll have, uh. Very good conditions over there if we have one of these long duration storms. It's an hour. It's an hour round trip by the time you get done messing around and it takes about twenty, twenty-five minutes to do the work. So it'd be better to have somebody over there to. To just do it.
Hmm. I feel like.
The other thing is, is I think we could just give it to Stan Martel if we wanted to, or I don't know his first name. But, uh, we could just give it to him and try it for a year like we've been doing with Phil and Frank. And see how it works out. That was the other flip side of this coin, but it's totally up to you guys.
Well. My involvement in this is that at some point. I talked to Nate Marcel. As you had talked to him about it, I I need, I bumped into him to talk to him about. The guy that owns at the end of McCoy Road because I thought he was. The caretaker. It turns out he just mows the lawn. But he was more interested in talking to me about your conversation with him about plowing and sanding the road. So there might be two people that are interested, so I don't know if you want to. Interview them. It is not. Over ten thousand. Um. Sometimes it costs. Sixty-five hundred and last year was only two thousand, so. I don't know if. If it's if it's by, I don't know that we should do it by the hour or if we do it by the. By the road that each time you plow, most guys that plow do it by. The storm as opposed to how long it takes them to plow. That's also you guys got to figure out.
I do know, I'm not going to give out, uh, their number, but it is under ten thousand dollars for a yearly. Uh, for just taking care of it for the whole year.
Hmm.
But. That's. That's Martel. Uh, what about Marcel? Is that? Have you talked to him about it?
I haven't talked to him lately. I talked to him a while ago.
Might not be a bad idea just to touch base with him and. See what he has to say about it.
Or we send these out and we have, we send them to both of them and then we can make it. More informed decision with their numbers. Michael.
Or you could open that up to a bidding process of some sort because there may be other contractors. In that area that would be more than interested. Just as opposed to just having two people you could get, you know. You could have the opportunity to have actually, you know, a bidding process.
And we could have option A and option B where option A is the hourly rates and option B is yearly rates and then. Right. Make a better choice.
Right, I would say for plowing, not hourly rate.
Yeah.
Because then they're going to plow really slow. No, I, that's.
And yeah, I. No, we probably need to get this out sooner, but I. Feel like I want to tweak this more, but maybe we just need to send it out and see what comes back, but.
You mean, put it out as a normal bidding process?
Yeah, just put it out, just as like a normal bidding process and then go from there. Um, because I guess part of me wants to have more like expectations. Written down, um, but I. Imagine we have the policy in there which they wouldn't include and then we can. Write a contract after that.
So Eric, does the winter maintenance thing have a timeframe or do we want to say these guys we need? They plowed within many hours at the end of the storm or the beginning of the storm or?
Throughout the storm, depending on what the storm is like.
It's laid out pretty good. If you guys want to read through it, it says. Plowing will start after two inches of s- snow has fallen. Um. It doesn't, and then it it's laid out pretty good. I think it gives somebody a pretty good, uh, handle on what we're looking for.
Okay.
I mean, maybe we just send these out and see what comes back for our next meeting. Then if we, we have different ideas between now and then we can. Do it again or. Um. And then we can also write up a more. Clear contract after that. That makes sense? That makes sense, girl?
Yeah, I'll clean this up so we have contractor contact information and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
We put on there and that we 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 deserve the right to reject any of the goods that.
Yeah, that would be great.
Good.
Right, do we want to approve this with those those edits? Or should we wait for the edits? Well, I'm just thinking like if we want to have something to look at.
The edit, the edits aren't going to be much. It's going to.
Be what's.
Typos and, you know, correcting the town's address and putting on the. Right to reject anything, the information where we need the contractors. Email, phone, best way to contact them, that means.
Worst thing that happens is that, um, we don't get anything back and then we have to do it again.
Yep.
This way we have the process started, maybe? That was my thought, but I'm also.
And I was going to do this per file slash submit as opposed to hourly.
Yeah.
Right.
As long as that makes sense to people who plow and sand. All right, motion to approve with those edits. I will make a motion when you approve with those edits.
I'll second that.
On favors. Hi. Hi, Devin.
Good to see you all.
You as well.
How are you guys tonight?
Good.
Going on?
Another night on the job, right?
We're partway through our highway, but we could. Pause that if you want.
Sure, it's it's if that's okay with Eric, if if not, I can, I can wait for this. So okay with you?
Whatever you guys want to do.
You guys want to? I'm fine. Okay.
All right, so, um, we spoke last, I think. And late August. Early September, yeah, late August. Um, and you all folks were going to think about it, see if you. Think of any projects and ideas. Yale did send me a sort of short list of ideas that. Had been sort of brought up in another meeting. Um, and I think those were really around the transfer station as well as a, um. Emergency preparedness plan, perhaps?
Yeah.
So, um, in talking with the AOA, those are not projects that they feel are a good fit, of course, right? That being said, I still think they're worthwhile and there are other resources out there that we could potentially use.
Yeah.
Um, so. You probably didn't see this, but the VLCT just opened up this program to the next fifty percent town, no, the next twenty-five percentage towns, so. Fifty percent and above. Are now available, which is another six or seven towns in our region, so that doesn't really necessarily. Preclude you all from still participating, but since they've made this call, they're sort of saying, hey, stick to the strip, strip, uh, the script. Excuse me, on those like major pro- uh, pro- project categories. I am fried. Sorry, I just spent two days at a staff retreat and I'm like still trying to use my mouth.
Oh, right.
So, uh. And those those five, if you remember, water, wastewater. Housing. Uh, workforce, business development. Um. Climate resilience. Climate adaptation and then, uh, sort of this other economic development category. Um.
It's stuff that really doesn't pertain to a town of six hundred people.
Yeah, totally, and that's, trust me, we, I have voiced my. Sincere, uh. Concerns about this program and we're not alone. Seems like every region is saying the same thing. It's. We're feeling a bit like. We got our town's hopes up and thinking this could really be a good program and. They're sort of keeping us boxed in. Um, that being said, you know, I still think there's value in having these conversations about. What is the kind of need out there that might not be normally addressed, um, through the normal sort of town business? Um, so if it is transfer station doing a bit of like. An analysis on is that still feasible? What what does it require? For this emergency preparedness plan? There are other funding sources for those. Obviously, they do carry a local match, which this program didn't have. Until the actual project, right? That's the one thing with this program is we pay for our time, so.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
There was some discussion on the select board about having. A community survey. Part of it in relation to. The recreation committee, so we can figure out what we need for. Recreation and what people want, or you would spoke generally about having some kind of. A community survey.
Yeah, community needs assessment is task one of this program. I think if we did do that, which. I would be very happy to do that and we can do that without sort of. Um. Committing to like a long-term project through this program, it would need to be a little bit broader than just recreation, which is okay. We could bake that in. And, you know, we could help prepare a survey and administer it, but it would have to be sort of all encompassing to see if there would be. A project for this program, you know? Um, that means that if you still were like, hey, well, we don't really want to do that, but we still want to do this survey. That's something we could help with you. With you with no matter what. Um. And there are, you know, VORAC grants out there. That's the Vermont Outdoor Recreation Council. Um. And as well as the municipal planning grants, those are also out there for those that. But, you know, I think we have, um, sort of a part-time rec planner on our staff now, and this is something you can potentially help you all with. So regardless of whether it's through this program or not, you know, we would. We'd be willing to do that with our own state funding, you know, without having a contract with the town at all.
Um, the community needs assessment. Uh, that is a part of this grant.
Totally.
Possibility. What all, what all does it encompass? Like, what is that?
Yeah, it can look. Different for different towns depending on like how far you want to take it.
Mm-hmm.
So there's no really one-size-fits-all approach, um. And it's really about, you know, what you're looking to get out of it. So if it's really broad-based, you know, we just want to understand what the priorities are of. The town are, you know, beyond this room, um. You know, we could deploy a couple of different. Outreach types. I can't remember. Is is Timothy on front porch forum?
Yeah.
Okay, so we, you know, we can craft, we actually have countywide access to front porch forums, so we can. Sort of push in ads and surveys through that, so we could do that. We could do, you know, an online. Survey that is either included in your town newsletter. Through a URL that pe- folks access, and if you think there's still a category of folks. Beyond that, that need to be reached, that wouldn't be on front, front porch forum or Facebook or email, we can look at actual hard mailers to those folks, too.
We have a bunch of those.
Yeah, yeah, every.
A stauncher, a supporter of. Not everybody has a computer, not everybody knows how to use one.
Mm-hmm.
Some people can use them for email, but they had no idea how to take a survey monkey.
Yeah.
You know, those, those kinds of things.
You're absolutely right, and that's why I think.
We do have a monthly newsletter that we put a hard nail one out if we needed to.
Yeah.
It's just, uh.
Is that how the newsletter goes out now?
Telling it up.
Is it mailed?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And then it's posted on the website.
Okay.
It's mailed.
Yeah. Yeah, the the biggest thing, you know, I did a thousand. Uh. Person survey a couple of years ago and. You know, we found that unless you. Provided a return. Address envelope, it was really unlikely that people were going to send it back. Most people don't even have stamps anymore, so like. You know, this category of folks probably would, but even still, that's one hurdle to sort of eliminate if if that's something you want to do. Now, if that's what you want to do, I think this program could pay for the stamps to the these folks. Um, and I can. Ensure that that happens by checking in with AOA, but. That seems like a very eligible expense, so if you want to start there and be like, hey, you know, we're not, we're really not sure. We don't want to walk away from this opportunity quite yet. That might be a nice, happy medium.
Can you send us a list of the kinds of questions that. Other towns are asking on their community nerd needs survey?
Is there like a template? Are they?
There are, yeah, and I think even VLCT has one. Um, we have, do not use a standard template. We try to like. Sit down with, you know, one or you all and say, what are the categories? And then we can backfill what the specific questions are.
Right, but it helps us, I think, to have a list to choose.
Sure, yeah.
We might think outside the box and come up with something other than that, but it's at least. There's a starting place, starting point.
Especially if they're like geared towards seeing if there's any other. There is a need in the town for any of these things on the list that. Are fundable. That we might not be thinking about or aware of.
Sure. So I'll send that to Gail and then you can disperse it out.
Yep.
Um, so I'll get some examples together. And then if that's the case, I think it would be. Um. Worthwhile to sort of formally accept the program so we can make all the expenses eligible and. You know, dollarize, cost of tea, sort of thing, um, so that does need to happen in open session. It can, you know.
Well, they said yes in September.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know that was in the minutes.
It did. It did say yes.
Okay, great. Can use. Is, are those on the website from September? The minute?
Uh. I have a paper right here.
Approved and everything, not even a draft form, like that, okay, um.
Well, we just approved.
I think they have moved it, but they're moving it forward this.
Was it an? It's not on that one.
Yep. So those. I'll find them on. Yeah. Okay.
Didn't get these posted yesterday, but.
Yeah, and I just have to ship those off to the AOA.
Does that sound like a plan to the two of you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Starting point. Now, will we want to trickle those questions down to the different committees or do we want to look at them first? I think we look at them and then I love that idea, trickling them down to the other committees. See if they have any other things they want to add. Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Are your committees made up of volunteers from the town?
Yes.
Well, what are those committees?
Hmm.
Are there a lot?
The planning commission, the conservation commission, they're just appointed a director. Maybe.
Okay.
Okay. Um.
Historical.
Equity and inclusion.
Union inclusion.
It's not bad. Historical is.
Everyone. It's a long.
It's not a town.
Oh, it's not a town.
Oh, yeah, no, so historical society is all meant to do.
Interesting. There's quite a few.
Okay. Perfect. Yeah, they could maybe vet a draft and comment on it. That can be good.
Yeah.
Um. Right. So one other thing while I'm here, so today, uh, this, these past two days, we were on a staff retreat to sort of. Kick off a rewrite of our regional plan. So this like a town plan is required every eight years. We have not had a full rewrite of our regional plan in Rutland. Since about twenty fourteen. And we are planning to rewrite this from scratch. We have a really, really. Robust drafting and development process laid out. Um, over the next three years, we're, we have to adopt by, um. May of twenty twenty-six. So we're going to start that work. In November. So why I'm telling you all this is we are really intent on making sure that this is a regional plan that is. Made up of all our towns and really reflects those priorities. So then community or the community needs assessment could be a nice sort of like. Um. Compliment to all that, but you know. We are. Very, um, intentional about doing more public engagement. Directly in communities than we have in the past. Um, so with that, we really want to make sure. Timothy and the surrounding communities have opportunities to weigh in, so the first, um. Engagement period is before we start drafting and that'll be from sort of mid-November through the end of February. End of March, um. And we'll be looking to sort of schedule meetings. We'll be sending out surveys and really it's. Super important that we partner with you all to get that word out to the broader community beyond, you know, select forwarding committees, but to everybody. Um, so there will be a really diverse range of surveys, meetings, um, pop-up tabling events. If you all have a community event during that time. We can come there, even if it's. Something at the school or, you know, a food drive, whatever it might be. Those are the things we're trying to partner on. Um, and meet people where they're at instead of sort of, yeah, come on down to Rutland. That's really not a realistic expectation, so. We'll be in touch. We'll try to. Yeah, go ahead.
I do have a monthly newsletter, so if you send a press release.
Perfect.
We can put it in people's brains. You might get a few contacts from that. They might just skim over it and, ah. You can say, hey, we tried, we put it in sales two or four times and.
Yeah, yeah, and we're, we're looking to partner with all the communities that have these newsletters, cuz. It's shocking how um, what following a lot of them have, you know, like the Benson Bulletin is like. Hot to trot and, you know, Tru's Berry Times is really, really popular, so they're good, good vehicles for this kind of information, so.
So, we have to have a town plan. Does that impact what you're going to put in your plan at all, seeing as how it seems like there would be a lot of useful information in the town plan?
Yeah, so we, we do review all the town plans, but really, um, and we, we've done an audit of sort of pulling out. And that's when I even put that uh, handout together for you all, it had some of the goals. So we have done that and sort of looked at them, we sort of come at most things from a regional lens. But we wanna make sure that like this, this project has specificity, because the current plan. Doubt anybody here is read it in detail, but it's not great, and it really lacks structure and specificity and. The sort of goals are very wishy washy, and we're gonna make everything like. Quite structured with a goal, policy and an action item that are outcome driven and realistic um. And that you all hopefully agree with. Granted, it's gonna be flexible, but we can't possibly make. It perfect for every single town, cuz Rutland City, Timmish and Ira all have different things going on, but. Hopefully we can find that common ground, so.
It's been w- wishy washy for decades. I used to be on the regional planning commission. Thirty years ago.
Yeah, yeah, we, we are intent and breaking that uh, cycle, yeah, we really are. Um, and we have some really exciting things, um, you know, some consultants on board to help us. Uh, develop it and make it, you know, much more readable and using graphics and data in a much more interesting way. So you'll be happy to know that we are planning to write this plan to be about a hundred and fifty pages, it currently stands at two eighty-three. And concise and to the point, so, yeah, it doesn't need to act as that sort of regional encyclopedia anymore, we all have Google. We know how to access information, so anyways, enough about that, I just wanted to put it in your ears, so you knew it was coming down the line. Um, and spread the word as best you can. Thank you all. And uh, I'll get Gail some stuff and then we'll, we'll probably circle back. It probably would be most efficient to sort of work. Some of these sort of back and forth outside a meeting be- with Gail or maybe you directly, so we'll, we'll talk offline. If that sounds good.
Yes, I need to talk to you about our town plan update offline, so.
Yeah, I know, um, we've been in touch with Bob and we would like to. Through our regional planning commission, like to come out and help you with the enhanced energy plan.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That will be interesting.
Yeah, I think it's. It needs to sort of be totally revamped, right? With new data, though, there's entirely new.
We have, we've been waiting for it.
Yeah.
We're, we're interested about the new data that's supposedly going to be.
We just put into Brandon's town plan and it took some, took some work.
Get it in hours back in twenty twenty. Information was just so jumping that we didn't really wanna put it in, but we did.
Yeah, well, what's good is Brandon was getting big, so you guys, we have a much more well-oiled machine for the second draft, so that should be helpful.
Back to you. Safety grant, cutting roadside trees grant update.
Email that I got that says because of all the. What stuff, it's gonna be delayed another month or two. But I, and I talked with David Burtsall the other day about trying to get some of the steps ready before they actually.
Perfect, we have our winter salt bid.
Well, let's talk about the winter salt bid. It went out to four or five different salt companies. We didn't get anything back by the twelfth. Except an email from Appalachia that said, hey, did you get my paperwork? And I didn't get it, he says, well, we mailed it on the fifth. I received it on the sixteenth. What I got from Cargill, where we've been getting it from, is nothing, they said they sent it, but it didn't come. The guy, Tim Barrett, who trucks it for us, said that they weren't going to do a formal bid, but they were gonna send a proposal. So, you can. And so we do have a bid from.
Right.
Appalachia, who's who we had a couple of years ago.
Do we think that the one from um. Is, are those, are gonna be one that shows up now, like later?
I don't know, but this, this was postmarked on October fifth from Rochester, New York, and it took till the sixteenth to get here. And this was what I received from Cargill, but it was only by email, and it wasn't actually from Cargill, it was from. Uh, the trucker guy. And so, you know, our bids say, no email, you gotta mail them, so I don't know if you wanna look at them. Do you wanna go out to bid again? I mean, we do have on the bid document, it says we. Reserve the right to reject any, in all bids, so. So these guys are saying they'll sell it to us for ninety-eight dollars a, a ton. The de-icer, and we had asked. The price for it, it's not on our bid document, it's just.
So we're gonna do it by the bid, this doesn't. Like, these guys.
These guys bid, but if they bid and it's a hundred and twenty-four dollars a ton. But yeah, technically, these guys are. But if you only get one bid, sometimes you can.
Yeah, can you send it? All right. We have our road salt stored inside of buildings and is drier than other suppliers, customers actually get more cubic yards of dry salt per truckload. Because there's less water, less vines and less dust. Our salt is loose and free flowing crystals that enable better salt spreading distances. This also creates reduced amount of salting trips within parking lots, reduce truck equipment hours, reduce fuel consumption and reduce labor hours. Hope this information helps you. Bulk rock salt is ninety-two dollars and ten cents a ton. Buck rock salt treated is a hundred and seven dollars and ten cents a ton, seasonal usage. Five hundred tons based on weather. Payment terms, thirty days. Truckload, thirty tons at a time, they have a few photos of their buildings. Oh, they sent them in an email, apparently.
So they're a hundred and seven treated?
Treated is a hundred and seven.
And Cargill is ninety-eight treated.
And then ninety-two for mined rock salts. They didn't fill it out. Eric, do you have any input on this?
Um, I, can you hear me? I talked to Tim and uh, he said that they were. They weren't real worried about their number per ton, they're giving it to all the towns in this area for the same. Uh, price, so that's why they're not really too crazy about sending in a bid. Um, so they weren't really worried about it, so I would think that.
Need one in order to properly do this. I guess my question is, is will they do a bid? But that's our.
Like they didn't have the manpower to do it, um, so that's why they're trying to get away from it. I'd hate to see, you know, one of our policies cost us money, that's all I got to say.
This is Cargill we're talking about?
The policies for a reason.
Well.
So how many tons of salt when we get air?
Wow, between four hundred and six hundred. I think we, I think we budgeted for four hundred ton this year.
We can redo the bids.
But if they're not gonna put in a bid, then it.
We did only get the one.
The four hundred tons. Difference is thirty-six hundred dollars.
The Cargill estimated their tons at three seventy-five.
Right, so I, I used four hundred. Hundred and seven dollars if not, it's over three thousand, eight hundred, and if we bought that four hundred ton from. Thirty-nine thousand, two hundred, so the difference is thirty-six hundred dollars. I don't know what the difference in in the product is, Eric.
I think it's pretty much the same, the chemicals come from the same place.
Well. We can redo the bids, we can send out the RF, we can send it all out again, um, and. If someone can reach out to Cargill and let them know that we have a process that. We have to follow, and we need them to send in a bid.
Or Peter from Appalachia say, hey, I submitted my bid. I should get it. And we, when we weren't meeting on the twelfth, and by four o'clock, which is when the bids were due, I sent out an email to. Everybody again, I resent it and said, hey, it's like where it's gonna meet in two weeks, I haven't gotten anything. And, and that's when Tim emailed back that. The Cargill wasn't gonna bid, but they were gonna send a proposal. So I don't know what the difference is, but. We also didn't get that in the mail, it hasn't come yet, so it's what we got is when he sent in an email. So what's your pleasure?
How, how much more work is it to, to do a bid?
It's not that complicated.
I'm not trying to be a jerk, we have a process for a reason, if they want, if they want our contract. Then it seems like that they would make the effort to do a bid.
So we shall try it again, is that our plan?
I mean, it sounds like they're going off from the fact that they know they're the cheapest and they're just. Whatever, here it is.
They are, and so we do also run the risk of them not sending a bid again, and we. We can decide that that's.
You got salt enough now, Eric, if we have a storm between now and the ninth of November?
Yeah, we should be fine, but I don't think they're gonna send you anything, I think you're wasting your time if. Personally.
Is there a reason why they, they don't want to do it that way, or?
I don't think they have the manpower to do it, they have, you know, they're busy and they got stuff going on and they'd have to send somebody down here in a car. To get it here on time, and you know, that just drives the price up. You're gonna pull the trigger on something, you might as well just pull the trigger on Appalachia and call it a day.
Do you know if you got the state bid, so?
I have no idea, I haven't talked to anybody. On vacation.
And some towns do use the state's bid, but. We've always gone out individually.
It would be nice to know, actually, yeah, that's a good point, knowing what the state's bid was.
Sometimes it's higher.
Right.
Because. I mean, state bids on, people bid on stuff to the state, they automatically add. Because there's more rig and roll to follow state rules.
Yeah, we used to do gradations, I don't know if they still do.
The other thing about the state bid versus our bid is some of the, a lot of the state garages are a lot harder to get to than we are. So that's why we get a little bit better price on it.
For convenience. I feel frustrated by.
Product last time, Eric, I think it was two, three years ago.
Say again, I missed it, please.
Are you happy with the product that you got from Appalachia?
Yeah, they're both fine, and they're both service was, has been better, for sure.
Who's service is better, Appalachia's?
Cargill's has been better than in the past, I've had, but Appalachia has really good service too. Um, they had better service than Cargill in the beginning when I first started, um, but Cargill's way better than they were.
Any ideas?
I would love to save the town money, but I have concerns about going against our policy.
Right, we wrote a policy. I mean, I don't know what other towns are doing when it comes to. Acquiring salt, another, is this, or have other towns moved away from a bidding process for salt, like why is it? So strange for Cargill to have to send in a bid. It just feels.
Well, then maybe they'll get their act together for next year.
That's true.
Yeah, I mean, like you said, I hate to spend the extra money, but they did what we asked them to do.
We only have the one, we technically only have one bid to look at right now.
Come and ask them to send you a bid for this specific reason.
All right, we could redo, we'd have to redo the whole bidding process, so Appalachia would have to send us another bid. Cargill, we can give them the opportunity to send in a bid. Formally.
But it doesn't sound. They're interested at all, so.
What do you think we could try, do it again? I would like to know why, like, if there's other, if there's new policies that towns are following for salt, or are other towns just going with the state? The state number, I mean, why, I'm just curious, this feels like a change or shift, so if there's, if there's a shift happening and we're maybe just. Are we behind the times? I don't know, I don't know. Um, I don't know how to find that out either, sir.
Well, I just have to make a few phone calls.
Redo it, see if they will. Do it.
And so this is public information, so. She's gonna know what.
I think they redo it, who knows, maybe the price will go up, cuz they don't wanna work with us anymore.
Right, well. It's like a. We don't have an excellent option either way, so redoing it, maybe we can also find out what the states. Numbers are, with what, or what the state's contract is, do we know what's, is there a way to find out what that is?
I would assume so.
And then if the bidding process feels. Like it's no longer working, then we could just switch over to using the states.
Well, sometimes the state awards it to somebody that we really don't wanna get their salt. In the past, as they've awarded it to somebody and we've gotten salt from that company before and it was. So, you know, there is reason for it.
Right, for wanting to not do that. Yeah.
Or possibly we need to pay our policy.
For just proposals to be sent.
I don't know, kinda going back and forth on it, like kind of.
I mean, thirty-six hundred dollars is not, nothing.
No, it's a pretty good chunk of change.
On a forty thousand dollar purchase. And sometimes we use that much salt and sometimes we don't. If we didn't use four hundred tons, then it wouldn't be thirty-six hundred, it would be less, but. If we use more, then that would go up a little bit.
And if we worded it now, it'd be done and we wanna do.
Somebody would have to make a motion.
I, I assume you have Tim's contact info, Eric.
I do, I can uh, I can send it to you if you wanna talk to him.
If we decide to. Send it back out, I guess I could reach out to him.
They just please fill out the.
And to say, you know, this is where we're still at, maybe we are doing it, maybe we're behind the ties, but. How we're doing it right now, I mean. Maybe change it in the future, but. Ask him if he could.
Right, but we're all here, plus the whole sealed bid thing, right, so now we're, we know the bid we want, but they didn't send the bid properly, so.
Right.
Is it fair? I don't know.
Right, is that fair to Appalachia, because they follow the rules? Right, is that fair to Appalachia because they follow the rules and we did get it before the board meeting?
Yeah.
And we're giving Cargill. Potentially another chance to do it right.
So next year you won't have anybody bidding. You know, Cargill or Appalachia follows the rules.
Right.
Then we don't follow the rules.
Do we have to do accept the bid right away? Can we find out what the state's numbers are?
Yeah.
And then.
Until the night, I would say.
Maybe we could postpone the decision until the night. Think about it. We can't, we'd have to, I I guess I'm saying we either just pick between Appalachia or the state's. Numbers.
But if we go to the state.
Otherwise, we have to redo it entirely.
But if we go to the state's numbers, then we're gonna potentially get it from a supplier that we don't want them.
Potentially, but, um.
And the guys that are putting it on the road.
Might have issues.
They have issues.
I think they've gotten better, but I know a handful of years ago. The railroad cars were coming in saturated and what salt does not do anyone much good.
Yeah, no. No.
I I think it's gotten better, but I don't know a hundred percent.
Well, currently, we were going to follow what we have in place currently. It would be to accept this bid.
Except that did.
Right.
And then Cargill says next year.
Right. And then in the next. Year, we might have to figure out. What's changed, why? You know, if this bidding process doesn't work anymore, because you know, because we did only get one bid properly, um, and it was higher. Than the proposal that was sent in that didn't follow the process, and so. If there's another way, we have to do it, but I think we might be stuck with this one. Right, yeah.
Should we just go ahead and accept our one bid then?
I think that is the right thing to do. It's frustrating because we're so close to having a. Less expensive option for the town, but I. I think that's, I think, to me, that feels like.
I mean.
That's why we have.
It is the right thing to do.
Right.
But.
Michael.
Why should you check out the cheaper, uh, price and save the town thirty-five hundred dollars? And start, stop debating the moral trajectory of this. I mean, you spent forty-five minutes on it. Go for the cheaper bid. Just and walk away. You didn't do it right, but you guys, you guys get to make the decision. You get to accept or do whatever you want, blah, blah, blah. Move on.
You do have, right, I think on the bottom of the the document, then it does say you have the right to reject it in all bids.
Oh, yeah. We do. Guess it's just a matter of.
Let's try to explain it to Peter from Appalachia.
Yeah, it sounded like I didn't follow the process, but it was cheaper.
But that's what you're, you're here to, you know. Be cheap. I mean, it's municipality.
Right, I just feel like, you know, it's frustrating. One of the, you know, one of the parts of being a municipality is that we create policies and then we can change those policies, but I don't know that we can change it. When we start presented with something we don't. You don't like. And I don't know what are. Exactly what's in the RFP. And did that even from, did that, did this thing from Cargill even come in time or? Wasn't in a sealed bid, so.
There was a steam man.
It came after the twelve, but. But I did extend it. I sent it, I sent it out again.
Yeah.
Because I was gonna ask the board forgiveness for sending it out to deal with it tonight.
Right.
If nothing changes up the date, you didn't have.
I'm fine with telling him. If you, if we, if we want to. If we want to reach out to him and see if he will do it by via sealed bid. Or do it that way. I'm fine with reaching out to him.
Well, that's.
Or do we just?
Right.
Right now.
We like your dollars.
Or do we just go ahead and?
That's not quite.
Accept it. Even though he didn't do it the way it was supposed.
I think.
Yes, my thought is as long as we're not gonna get sued and that's costing the taxpayer more money.
Right. Right, I mean, I think there's some trickiness in the sealed bid process. There was a reason why it was put in place. I wasn't, I don't know. When that started, but it's been in place and it's been working. Cargill sent us a sealed bid last year.
Well, and they actually charged us less. They bid ninety-eight dollars last year, but they only charged us eighty-seven. And when I said something to Tim Barrett about it, he says, pay the bill they send you.
Yeah.
So. Does that?
I mean, we can do what we want.
But it also means that we do, you know, like, what is the point of doing?
Seal beds.
Right.
So maybe we need to.
Right, changing how we. Changing how we do it going forward.
Right.
The way you can do it differently would be to accept email bids, but then they're not sealed.
Right.
How many people have access to the email other than you?
Nobody.
So it's somewhat still sealed.
It is, right.
So maybe that's what we do.
She won't be around forever.
That is true.
A sealed bid is technically the safest way because that way there is no, like, just what you guys are and what I actually suggested. It's, the protocol is there for a reason. For, you know, and those who follow the appropriate methodology, you guys can totally disregard all of them. And ask for, you know, two more sealed bids. And if they come back and it's the same price. You've lost, you know, the next meeting is in two weeks.
But if they don't.
Well, if they don't, if they don't, then they're gonna lose it. That's what they need to understand. They wanna. They wanna bid, be considered, they need to follow the process. And if they choose not to, then.
Or we update our policy to accept email bids.
You know, because. If Cargill emails me a bid and it's ninety-eight bucks and I really like Peter, I'll call Peter and say, hey, Peter, Cargill just bid ninety-eight dollars.
Right.
That's why you have the.
Which is why, you know, we only have, yeah, I mean. I understand it feels.
So we don't call them, put it back out. See if they do do it the correct way.
Yeah.
And. If.
And find out what the state.
For some reason they don't, then we go with that, like.
Well, Appalachia need to resubmit.
Or we, they would, we can't just hold that bid over.
They'd have to be sealed bids. I don't know if two weeks is enough time, honestly.
Is there a timeline on?
Well, you see how long it took to get from Rochester to here. It's took sixteen.
Yeah.
Week and a half. So.
Well, we could just redo it. I feel like it's either redo it or accept this one. Or accept none and go with the states. Be sad when it's bad.
I'm good with putting it back out.
Yeah, I was thinking, let's just put it back out and try again and. Maybe the mail will move a little bit quicker this time.
And the reason you're putting it back out is you only received one bid and you rather, you prefer to have.
We'd have something to compare it to.
Yes.
Or one official bid.
As there was some other town, I read them and it was somebody that they rejected. They went back out to bid because they wanted.
Received one.
Right.
And maybe we need to find out just.
So I'll try to get that out tomorrow.
That would be great.
Same people and say, hey. I need a response, but that's what I did. When I sent it out on the twelve.
Yeah, right.
Please let us know if you're gonna bid or not gonna bid. And that's when we got something from Cargill. He said, oh, we're not gonna bid.
Right.
Okay.
Send a proposal. But the other companies, American Rock Salt and.
Well, we'll send them all out again. We'll try one more time.
If they don't, then we'll just.
Yeah. And I don't know if two weeks is enough time. Maybe it has to be.
Or.
Special meeting in the end of November, just to open seal bids.
Doesn't have to be.
Yeah, I thought how much is known between now and then, but.
When we're looking at the ninth. Or a possible another.
Ninth is our regular one.
The ninth is your regular one.
Right, or possible other special meeting.
Um, well, Thanksgiving is on the twenty-third.
Right, so we can do like the twenty.
The twenty, twentieth, the twenty-first is a Tuesday.
I could do it.
That's why first would work for me.
Doing the normal meeting.
At not the.
The special one, yeah. November.
Just. Yeah, sure. All right. Give some time to do it again. And then, yeah, I mean, if it's, you could make some phone calls gal and see what other towns are doing. Something's shifted, um. How other people are acquiring, I mean, only getting one bid feels like. I don't know, and it's hard because doing other towns and they're accepting proposals, I'd just like to know.
Yeah.
How they're making that work. Um, so I certainly don't wanna cost them town extra money because of the policy, but I also feel like.
It did alright.
Did do it right. Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right. We figured that one out. Okay, driveway permit application.
So the driveway permit application, last time you approved it from Kevin Brown, we. Somewhere between. The current. Ag driveway and Rod starts.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Kevin Brown stopped in the other day and said, he doesn't wanna put it there. He wants to go to ground where that lane is already. There's a driveway that goes up through.
Yep.
House, his driveway.
Yes.
Because Bolton, him and Travis are gonna use it as a common driveway.
Okay.
And so he'll go this way and.
That one will go that way.
The power can run up there, so.
Okay.
I think Eric is gonna look and see if that. I think there's an old culvert there now. I don't know if it needs one or not, but.
Okay.
Eric, you got any update on that?
Uh, they need a new one. I'll talk to Kevin about it.
And did the form get updated? I know we were looking for how many feet from the.
Right, and because that was empty, we can still use that same one and just.
Say it's.
Measure, yeah, that's where the measure is.
Excellent. All right, the proposed grader, please.
That's in your packet.
Yeah.
Eric, how long would this last us? If we bought it, how long? I can't remember what we had in there for.
Twenty years.
Twenty.
Yeah, I think it's till it's twenty years old, I think. Oh, I think we got them, well, ours is a ninety-nine. And it's two thousand twenty-three, so I think we're running the greatest twenty-five years from, uh, build date, so. Twenty thirteen plus twenty-five.
Well. Um, do you guys have an opinion on any of this? Leasing it does seem expensive to me, but.
I think we need to keep discussing it.
It is.
Both ways are expensive.
Both ways are expensive.
Yeah.
And there are other options on that list also. Not on this list, but. From our last meeting.
Right, but this was the grader that was closest to what we have, I think.
Yeah.
So maybe we need a budget time. We need to put more money in there.
Yeah. Right.
Well. He's been talking about the new truck. Can we push the new truck out a little bit? No.
Yeah, I'm sure he's gonna.
I mean, I think.
Address that.
I think, um. Right. One of the issues with our champion is that it's difficult to. So I don't know if it makes sense to get something to trade it in, just to not have to deal with it anymore for something that's. Less expensive, but we can actually get parts for. Um, just as an idea.
That one's kind of the. That one's kind of the one that fits all the. Checks all the boxes. Unfortunately, it's way more money. I think all the other ones have a twelve-foot moldboard on them, uh. The greater blade.
Yeah.
I think all the other ones on that list have a twelve-foot greater blade on them. That was the problem.
Yeah, and are there any other places we can get? You know, this from, like, this is from one.
I mean, we can keep, I mean, we can keep looking. It's not a problem. Um, we had one that. We kinda wanted to go look at, but it may be pending now and. Um, it was still, the one we wanted to look at was kinda out of our price range also, and then it didn't have a wing. So it put it to like a hundred and twenty-five grand for that machine too. So I think. I don't know what the right answer is at this point.
Yeah.
Just waiting.
Just keep looking, maybe if we can find another person. I mean, you did do a great, I mean, I will say the proposal was. Great, the one you sent us before. There's another. Like. I don't even know where this one is based, but.
Yeah.
Uh, up near. And so it looks from this that we couldn't even get it, we don't. Like, they don't have it. They're gonna take this, they're gonna take this as a trade-in.
Yes, they would take ours as trade-in. They're gonna take, as soon as the new grader for Guilford shows up. They would deliver the new grader to Guilford, then bring that grader to Tinmouth and then take our grader. To Milton. I'm assuming is how it would work.
But they're, they're thinking it's, they're not gonna have it until. The availability is twelve twenty-four, that's a year from now. Am I reading that right?
I don't think that's right. He said he, they had a. They had a window to get a new build in and, uh, Guilford took it. It was, they kinda, they line jumped a little bit. So I think it's ready. That's probably wrong. That's probably, um.
Oh, twenty-three.
Well, yeah, it's a year from now, so I think we need that to figure it out.
Yeah, no, I think it's, I think it's like Christmas time, I think. But I can find out. I just, I knew it was way out of our price range, so I haven't really chased it down without any, uh. You know. Go ahead from you guys.
Yeah. Well, we'll just have to keep looking until hopefully one comes along. Right, and we can try to budget for it.
Maybe we call Guilford and say, hey, what's, what's Kat gonna give you for a trade-in? We'll give you ten thousand dollars more.
Right.
There you go.
I already tried that.
Nothing ventured, you know?
All right, well.
Um, yeah.
All right, uh, new truck tandem process.
Um, I'll be, I should be a little bit smarter. By the next meeting. Um, I talked to. Mike Murray from Viking today and he, uh, went through, he should have some pricing on. Equipment. Uh, for the truck. Um. So we may have to adjust our bid process a little bit because this is gonna be, this one's gonna be bumpy, I think.
Good.
Because, um. The timing is funny. The body guys are eighteen months out, basically. And depending on which truck, uh, we put under it. Mac is, uh. Five to seven months out. Western Star is twelve months out. And International is saying they're two years out. On a truck. So, um, Jeff from International is giving me some pricing together for the truck. Um. So I should have. The numbers for the equipment by your next meeting. Um, but I don't. I was talking with him today and I don't know how they're. Putting together a number for a truck that's not, it's two years away. Like, how do they know what that price is going to be? So, uh, hopefully I can talk to Jeff before your next meeting and we'll have some idea. Usually international is about twenty thousand dollars cheaper than the other two. Um. So I'm working on it, I guess is all I could say.
The last time we did it, we got away from doing it individually, buying the truck and then getting the equipment. We decided to have the. The dealer get the equipment and we bought everything all at once, but you're saying we need to go back the old way?
I'm not, I'm not sure yet. I'm just. We're, I'm not sure how this is going to work, so, uh, stay tuned, I guess is the best thing I can say at this point.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Yeah, that's all for highway.
Um. Did you look at the, I included it in the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You got it.
Hold on, it's been a report just. Put those on to date.
Or else that were there.
Interesting.
Yeah.
If they've done so far, this talks beginning with something in December.
Okay. And he is, I mean, we did confirm that he's. Giving us different size. Or is he just going with the big size that we originally went with? Or is he giving us like an option?
That's what I expected for that. Stephanie wanted us to discuss my question as whether they were going to. My question was, you know, are they going to help us figure out if this is the right size?
Right.
And his response was, well. We don't think it was in the scope of it, but we'll try to figure that out and see if we can work it into what we're doing because some of what we're doing is not going to cost us much of what it.
Right.
And so Stephanie wanted. You guys to figure out whether. You did indeed want them to help us make sure that what we're getting was the right thing.
Yeah, absolutely. So what there's, so are these.
My cost is a little more, but.
But it might save us in the end if it means a smaller building.
Well, it might get us a building.
Right.
You know, if it, if the big one comes in way too expensive, then. We'll have an alternative to say.
Yeah.
Let's, let's use this size.
Right. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's what it's me. Okay.
All right. We have no year end reports. We do have some. Financial reports and some warrants and orders.
Lots of. They will and.
Yeah.
There was one, I think they got their eight hours of lead time in the wrong column, but that was all I noticed.
Let's do one, do one more.
Okay.
They got one time. And I don't, I don't have the time sheets in the packet. It gets an email to you. I was told they don't, didn't all have to go in the package.
Yeah. Uh, does anybody have any questions, comments on any of those? No, that's the only thing I know is. Anyone want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
payroll.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have the updated ARPA request list.
And I'm going to include that in your packet.
Right, it's just the cleaned up version.
For. The fire department and you can open your committees.
Okay.
Right.
Uh, space it on my.
That's okay.
Yeah, and I'm waiting on stuff. From my end too.
Okay.
Um. Cause they still have not gotten back with Matt. Yeah.
That's fine. We'll do it at our next meeting tonight. All right, uh, authorized select board assistant to sign VLCT documents, insurance coverage and. Merck, which I can't remember what it stands for.
Emergency energy contract where they're going to come and do an assessment.
Right.
Um, and I think we got bumped down a little bit. So, you know.
Okay.
It's going to take longer. The insurance I got was, yeah, we're going to come and, they'll come and do it, but it's going to be two or three months out.
Yep.
The, the towns that rated higher. There was a few, they did the whole county. There's a few of them that rated higher, so they get their attention first.
Okay.
Um, but they both have comp, there's a contract for the energy thing and there's a. This thing from the. Kevin, before you leave, before I forget, I need to check the. Fire department's equipment.
Yeah.
For the regular insurance and.
Okay.
Um. Is. They've come across something where uninsured motorists. What VLCT provides right now is due from years ago and it's like two hundred and fifty thousand. And the standard now is like a million or ten million or something, so they want to know if we want to opt in or opt out, keep it one way or the other. And when I asked what the difference was and what the cost was, it would cost us four hundred dollars. A year more. And it basically is. Most of the times it's being used as a, for towns and cities that have these departments. They can have a cruiser that gets in a crash or something.
Right.
That's it, so. I'm thinking for now.
No.
We have to officially decide one way or the other and. I don't know that we need that extra coverage, but.
Um, do we, we, do you have any problems with authorizing our sucker assistant? To be the signer of these documents?
Nope, I'm good with it.
Yeah. Uh, I'll make a motion that we authorize the select board assistant to sign VLCT and, and the RP contracts and documents.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you're welcome. And then we have this email from David, which. That we can discuss at our next meeting. It was a nice grant opportunity.
He's on here.
Oh, right. Is he, oh, good.
Yep.
David, are you still there?
Yep, yes. Took me a minute to figure out how to get unmuted. So yes, this is, I just got that notice today. Um, about that grant and what it, it obviously what it says is they, they want to. They'll give out money to help take down ash trees, but they also want trees planted. So. I don't know, I have a feeling a lot of towns, you know, will do plantings in their greens and, and their public spaces. And we just don't have a lot of those, so. I'm going to ask Joanne Garden if, if it can be other than, you know, sort of public places. But. It's worth looking into, I think. What the heck, right?
Yeah, it can't hurt.
Yeah.
We do maybe need to replace that elm tree. We could do one tree.
That's right, which by the way, Meadow, I was thinking we would leave it.
Yeah.
You know, had one live branch, but I think we have to take it down because I'm looking at one of the, the, the spikes coming off. It's losing its bark.
Yeah, it doesn't look like it's in good shape.
No, it's, I think it's, it's succumbed unfortunately.
All right.
Okay.
Um.
Are you going to take care of that?
Yeah. I'll ask Eric what, if, if can help with chipping it or hauling it or whatever, but yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks, David.
Yep.
Um, we can think of. Yeah, is it? Yeah, you could look into the grant for next meeting, maybe.
Well, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, we don't have a lot of public. Tree.
Right.
Planting area, so maybe they tweak it for us. Tweak it for.
Maybe there should be a conversation about planting. Trees in the, in the right of way along the road sides.
Hmm.
Cause there is a lot of benefits to having shade trees along the roadside.
Yeah, maybe if that's a possibility, we can look up.
No, I mean, there's, there's added that you have a tree, tree line growth.
Yeah, all right, well, let's. Yeah, I'm all for grant money to give us trees and help us take that out ones we can't deal with. All right, feedback form. We got one from Sherry. Now I don't. Know what I did with.
Um. Definitely wasn't one that I handled well.
Yep, I, I would buy it actually. All right. Sherry and Kim. We. They sent this in on, uh, yesterday. We have been attending hybrid Zoom meetings for various organizations. Most of these groups are able to manage a hybrid setup. While we appreciate the select board's actions to make the meeting accessible to citizens who cannot attend in person. We find that the chairs of some of the town committees need some guidance on how to make hybrid meeting successful for all participants. Here are some of my issues. There should only be one conversation at a time. Side conversations are difficult to follow and not transparent. It is very difficult when two conversations that are happening at once to follow them on Zoom. Make sure conversations can be heard clearly and speakers identified. When noncommittee members participate, they are often too far away to hear clearly and do not identify themselves. Make sure that screen sharing is enabled so that materials that are submitted after meeting packets are sent out can be seen by Zoom participants who are not in person. When materials are shared with in-person participants, they are described verbally or are shown to the camera, which makes them difficult to see or comprehend. One other suggestion. We have concerns video recordings. The Zoom host can spotlight the owl as soon as there are three participants, including the owl and the town office. Or speaker view can be used to see who is talking. Right now, the select board takes up a small portion of the video screen when they are the main participants of the meeting. That is all on there. Um, so, uh. Jerry, did you want to talk about this at all? Or?
I would just like for a. Policy or procedure to be. Sent to the chairs of the various committees that part of being the chair is making the committee so everybody can follow it.
Yeah, maybe.
And I'd be glad to help if any of those suggestions are. Need, someone needs help technically implementing them.
Yeah, is it possible to see if any other towns have. Policies for hybrid meetings and like in place and we were going to write a policy? You can see if the need, not reinvent the wheel ourselves.
Right.
And then we could talk about it at our next meeting or at our second meeting next month if it's not, it's too soon. For the next one.
Might not get, we might not.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Um, Sherry, does that make sense? That feel like a good response? Do you want more follow up? From us, we can.
I'll wait till your next meeting when you talk about it.
Okay, sounds great. Okay, and. Members' concerns? That's you two. Any concerns?
Um, I'm good.
Do we need to respond to Mr. Power? Oh, yeah, is he, oh, he's on there now.
Do we have that still?
At the last meeting, we read this.
I put it under advisement.
He said, we're going to take this under advisement.
Didn't do anything.
Well, we, we, yeah, that's, it's a big discussion topic. Um.
Do you have a copy of it?
Also, he was encouraging me to keep talking about options for.
Road commissioner.
Road commissioner's job description because you have done that, started doing that and he said, I'd like to hear more about that and then.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So I don't know what your. Kind of deal with that if you're going to have more conversation about it or talk to him about having more conversation about it or what you want to do. That was the feedback that. The feedback for your feedback.
Yeah.
I just got to find a word meaning here.
Yep. Um. Yeah, we had discussed at a past meeting about the job description for the road commissioner. Uh. My feeling is I feel uncomfortable myself. Changing it without input from. The town as a whole. But to me, it feels like a bigger. A bigger, um, specifically because it's just administrative.
Theoretically, we need to hire a second employee. I think to help with the roads and whatnot.
Right.
It is here.
Oh, sorry.
So if we made it more of an administrative role. I would assume we need to hire a second employee to help with the actual labor.
Right, you're good, you're looking at doing a, a manager, road manager, and then a road. Commissioner.
We need to go through.
And a crew.
Welcome.
Which to me feels like.
Your options are the road. Commissioner's job description is totally up to you guys. You could make it so it was managerial.
Right.
Back when the select board talked about it when Brad Casey was on board, he wanted to do just that part and then he would hire a road foreman. Um, and then the road crew, so he wouldn't necessarily.
And then terms of, we can't really talk about enough, it's not on the agenda. But we could put it on the agenda to talk about, um. At another meeting.
I have spoken to other towns about this.
Um. And I would be curious to know how other towns did that transition, whether it was by vote, whether it was just by the select board doing it, um.
I don't know how they handled the transition, but I can tell you.
So that's the part that I. Want to figure out. That's the part that.
And it depends on what you want the person to do with a hundred people.
Right.
Right. So we could put it on the agenda.
The board, when Brad Casey was on, there was a lot of administrative stuff coming.
Right.
That somebody needed to handle. And if you want somebody else helping them road, then, you know, they don't have ten hours a week to do.
Right.
Work, so you find somebody else to do that for them.
Um.
Right, because then you're looking at overtime for that.
Right.
I mean, technically.
Just in case you need.
So my suggestion is in terms of responses that we could, we could put this topic on as an agenda item for the staffs.
Yes.
As a select board.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, if he's still there and he wants.
Still there. If he's awake, I shouldn't say that because he is awake. You'll hear him saying.
Oh, well, Rick, if you'd like to speak to that, that, that would, that's my suggestion as a, um. Way to move forward with your, your feedback.
And sometimes it's probably figuring out how to.
Uh, Miss Lee's correspondence and mail.
If we could go to all of that.
Yep.
In the gym, or on the gym as I.
Yeah. Uh, do we need an executive session? Would either of you like to call?
I don't think so.
Gail, do you have a reason to need an executive session? All right. Our next meeting is Thursday, November ninth, seven PM. That's all I got.
Okay.
All right.
Awesome.
Yeah, we agreed on, I just have to sign this right from the Champlain Valley.
Yeah.
Okay.
I put it in your folder because I figured somewhere later you're going to.
I would get, get to it eventually. Yeah, so good, good.
We don't sign that, it's just you.
Yeah.
Thanks, you guys.
Good night.
Night.